Back to order, and we have been in closed session discussing a legal matter. Now we'll have a roll call.
Herny.
Here.
Suter.
Here.
Crabtree.
Here.
Mather.
Here.
Elmore.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Now Reverend Greg Turner will share an invocation with us and we'll say the pledge. Let's pray. Gracious God, we praise you and thank you that you're the source of our life and the source of our liberty. And we welcome you to do within us what is pleasing your side. As this body of legislators gather, the decision makers, the leaders in this community, we ask that your presence be felt here and be affected in the decisions they render, that it may go well for the benefit and welfare of this public they represent. We ask your blessing upon them in their service to this community and affirm them that they are indeed used of you to effect your purposes as they seek your will. Father, for these blessings and more, we thank you. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Blessed are we, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in indiscernible, with liberty and justice
Next item on the agenda is discussions and presentations, and I know of none. No, it's not. Next item on the agenda is public comments. If anybody has anything they'd like to address council about, now's the time. Now we'll move to discussions and presentations, of which I know of none. So if no one else does, then we'll move to approval amendments.
Most approve.
Is this for both or one?
Well, Mitchell was absent on October 2nd, but she's not here this evening. Everyone was present on October the 14th, and Mitchell and Mather were both absent on November the 10th. So...
Well, I have to do two.
Yes. Okay, so this one will be for the October 2nd work session minutes and the October 14th.
Is this time to point out maybe a mistake, or do we approve it in the...
Um...
On the October 14th minutes? On the public comments, it said Bruce Owen read a statement to the council regarding family support. It said Owen went on to say it was felt that 25 percent of proceeds from the sale should go into the park system. I think it's supposed to...25 percent for the Nelson, or the Route 66. All of it's going into the park.
Correct. You're right.
So I don't know if that needs to be clarified a little bit.
Okay.
That statement, to my mind, represented a preference. It has nothing to do with the agreement.
Correct. She's technically correct in what his intent was. It's 25 related to allocation of the Route 66, because 100 percent of the proceeds are going into the park system.
But I'm wor...yeah, I'm just concerned people will see that and think, where's the other 75 percent going?
Yeah, you're right.
So I think we better clarify that.
Okay. Um...
So I think it's 100 percent will go to the park system.
Okay. Since you're wanting to make an amendment, we can't vote on all of them, on those two at the same time. So let's do the October the 2nd minutes first, and Jordan and Herny, the first and second. So Crabtree.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
You could just amend that by putting 100 percent with 25 percent going to...
Right.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Say that again. I thought I heard you, but...
Well, you could...so you don't have to change that much, went on to say...
Oh, okay. Yes, yes. To change the percentage to 100.
100 percent.
And who wants to make that motion?
I will.
Okay.
Second.
This is not a vote, this is just a technical vote to change. Not whether it's for...
For the amendment would be Mitchell. Um, excuse me. Mather. We're doing a roll call for the amendment.
Yes.
Elmore. Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Okay, and this is for the approval of the amended minutes. I need a motion and a second.
Yes.
Second.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Vote to approve the November 6th work session minutes.
November the 10th?
It said 6 on here.
Today's the 10th.
6 is here.
Oh, okay, yeah. I'm sorry, I had it wrong in my...
Okay.
Okay. And the second?
Second.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Vote to approve the November 6th work session minutes.
November the 10th?
It said 6 on here.
Today's the 10th.
6 is here.
Oh, okay, yeah. I'm sorry, I had it wrong in my...
Okay.
Okay. And the second?
Second.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mather.
Upstaying.
Elmore.
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is approval of warrants.
Most approve.
Second.
Anybody have a specific warrant they want to talk about?
Yeah, I had one, I'm trying to find it. I apologize, I was running late this evening. On, actually, I think for council reports where I saw...I seen where we had paid for a survey on, over industrial park on, for Dalco, to finish that off, I guess. But didn't we survey all of that a year ago?
Yeah, we did, but they were...and we actually was able to get a simple boundary survey. We did a plat a year ago, so that's why the cost was considerably less. But as part of the title commitment is that we would give a updated survey of that parcel of land. So it was not the same as the plat. The survey that we...the plat that we presented was the replating of the entire industrial park, which included that lot. This was a standalone survey for that parcel of land as part of the title commitment. And they originally wanted an alte survey, and I was able to get it down to just a standard survey.
It just stuck out for some reason.
Good question.
Anybody else? Another roll call?
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
No. And I'll set date wide. I disagreed with the amount of money that's being spent on the Civic Center when it came up before, and many of these warrants go towards that. And so I don't want us not to pay our bills, but because I disagreed with that, I vote no.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
I agree with Ms. Herny about what she's saying, but I will vote yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Okay, I got a question. Did, when the Civic Center was all completed, was it as we had set it out, set forth to begin with? Yes. I'll vote yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Do I get to vote?
You started, I believe, didn't you? I have you circled that you started.
Okay.
It takes a while.
Don't confuse me.
Now we'll move to financial and approval of the audit, which you heard two weeks ago.
Most approve. Second.
Question or discussion? Roll call, please.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
And the quarterly investment report.
Motion to approve. Second.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Now we'll come to ordinances, there being no second reading. We'll move to first and second readings, and start with the purchase of trench shielding.
Yeah, this is just a trailer, an enclosed trailer to put that shoring equipment in, to store and to haul to job sites. There'll be this trailer here, and then the next ordinance will be the purchase for a equipment trailer. Both these trailers were bitted out, and a local vendor was able to spot both of these.
Can you go down to the bid sheet where it had the warranties?
On this ordinance?
Yeah. I think that's... On the, um, the one that was only $200 difference, I know it's out of town, but I was just curious, limited five-year, do you know the difference between the five-year and the three-year on that?
I don't suspect the warranty's gonna be that big with issue on this. This is a trailer that...
It's the next one that was more.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Move on, second.
Second, second.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
We were considering Council Bill 4035, and it has been approved and becomes ordinance 5288. Council Bill 4036 deals with the purchase of the equipment trailer from D&amp;A Paint and Truck Accessories.
Can you go down again? Yeah, this was...you don't think it's that big of a deal?
Yeah, I don't...it's $500 to buy two years' worth of warranty on the frame. I don't think it's worth that, really.
All right. Just want your opinion.
Especially when it's local anyway.
Yeah. Motion to approve.
Second.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Council Bill 4036 is now ordinance 5289. Council Bill 4037 deals with purchase of tasers for the police department.
Chris, you want to address it?
What's it got working?
I heard.
This is to replace five of our current model X-26 tasers that have been taken out of warranty and no longer able to be replaced with five new X-2 tasers.
I noticed that you're only asking for partial on the holsters, but the holsters you have are not compatible, correct?
That's correct. The holsters for the X-26 are not compatible with the X-2. I only asked for three holsters out of this capital improvement because of the...there was a price increase, and it put me over my budget of $5,500 that I established with the capital improvement plan. So I've only asked for three holsters in this request. I was gonna purchase the other two holsters out of a different uniform fund account that I had.
I'd like to amend that. If you go back up.
I need a motion and a second on the floor for the first reading before we can amend.
Most approve.
Second.
Okay. We'll go back up.
It's amended to five holsters.
There aren't any references to holsters in the ordinance. You would have to change the dollar amount.
Okay.
So we have to...okay, so we're changing the dollar amount to incorporate the two additional holsters.
Additionals, because there's no sense in buying a taser if you can't holster it.
Okay. And are you making the motion for that?
I am making that motion to amend.
My second, though.
Okay, roll call for the amendment. Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Do you have the dollar amount handy, if that's gonna be or not?
They're sixty-something dollars each.
They're $6,395 each.
Yeah, they're $6,395 a piece.
It would put me...it would put $125.44 above the $5,500. $128 more money? Yeah.
And I appreciate you trying to stay within, but they need the holsters.
What do you do with the old ones?
They've been tearing up on us as quick as we can get them replaced. Right now I have, in the...I put in the staff informational sheet, three senior officers do not have tasers, and I...my plans with these five that are gonna be replaced is to give the three senior officers tasers and my animal control officers tasers. The only defense against a vicious attack that they have are, you know, mason and ass. That's an extensible baton. And, but that's my plans right now. And if, in the future, you know, within the next years, another officer's taser quits and can't be fixed, then we may have to give them away to those officers.
I was just curious.
I was on the list, but I didn't...
Well, I was gonna try to get you one.
No, I appreciate that.
You can get it to him, or he's what?
You know?
Actually, I was getting it for him, but I don't wanna get it.
This is a roll call on the amendment, first reading. Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Move on, the second.
Second, second.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Council Bill 4037, as amended, has been passed and is ordinance 5290. Council Bill 4038 deals with an agreement between the city and eleven humane society and...
I'll do. This, basically, this is, we used to have a program to where we provided a not-so-fun service for them, and they were able to take all of the strays and animals that we deemed adoptable and help us adopt those so they would not see the same level of service from our police officer, or animal control officers. And so what this does is this formalizes that engagement on a permanent basis so that each organization understands its role within the adoption and final disposition of animals.
Second. Will numbers be kept, do you know, animal control, on how many we give to them and how many they give to us? You keep track of it?
Yes, we have been keeping track of those.
Okay.
There's a report that's turned in on a monthly basis.
Okay. Well, I just noticed, I mean, this month alone, we had, we did 59-point-something animals. Didn't quite come out to 60 somehow, but...
It was a little bitty one.
And, I mean, that's a lot of animals to be putting down.
It is. But they also, they took 30 some.
Well, I know. That's why I'm saying that.
So they took, what, 30 percent or better than 30 percent, and then plus the cats, so...
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Council Bill 4038 is approved and is ordinance 5291. Council Bill 4039 deals with contract with Trans-Tam Contracting on pressure main installation on North Side.
Have we ever worked with them before?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they've done several bores for us over the years. This one here won't be a...it'll just be a pressure main. What we're doing is there's two driveways out there that's...one of them's full concrete and has a lot of landscaping. It's a lot cheaper to bore it as to open trench it, such words.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Upstaying.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes. I did have one other question. I'm going to, I mean, they were way low, and I know it's because they're local, too.
Some of them delayed the mobilization.
That's, yeah.
Then two, third, I mean, what's he gonna be aggressive on this? I see, I see. He's out of town. Counting parts that just isn't paying off.
Okay. Well, yeah, like half the, half the cost of the other bids. That's, that's why I wanted to know, make sure we...it's a good deal. The other ones had to come here, too, bring their equipment down.
We'd use that.
Okay. Move on, the second.
Ma'am, motion and second.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Wheeler.
Yes.
Herny.
Yes.
Suter.
Upstaying.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Council Bill 4039 is now ordinance 5292. Council Bill 4040...
Mayor, we didn't get a second reading on that one.
That was the second.
Oh, yes, you're correct. I'm sorry.
One for the mayor.
Yes, I apologize. I'm filling in my stuff a little premature.
Way to go.
Give me just one second, Mayor.
May we move to the next bill? Council Bill 4040 allows us to accept donation from Emerson Electric of rebreathing equipment. You need to elaborate on that industry.
I'm happy to. Some time ago, Emerson contacted me and asked me if I would like to have some self-contained breathing apparatus or SCBA that they had purchased that they didn't want. And for a minute, my heart stopped because I thought I'd found a solution to a $170,000 problem I'm gonna have in about a year. And unfortunately, that's not the case. The air packs they're wanting to donate to us are for industrial use only. They can't be used for firefighting, and there's, they specifically say that on the equipment. But what I can do is, I can bid those out for sale because they're only about three years old, almost four years old now, and there is a industrial use for them out there. And I've already found four companies who are interested in bidding on buying that equipment from us, so we'll be able to reap those funds. Unfortunately, the funding isn't as high as I thought it was gonna be initially, but we will be able to sell them, turn around and sell them. And Emerson is aware of that. They know we have no use for them. I've told them that since day one, and they don't care. They just, they want them gone, and they're offering them to us.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can I ask, just, I read the ordinance and approved it, but as I'm sitting here thinking, I just want to get clarification. Well, ultimately, if that expense is approved, we will expense that out of Fund 22, right? For the fire apparatus, breathing apparatus. The ordinance states that the proceeds would go into Fund, the general fund. So I just want to bring to the point that the ordinance says the proceeds of that will go into the general fund, and the expense, the ultimate, the future expense is planned to come out of Fund 22. So do we wanna put this revenue into Fund 22, or just leave it as the ordinance says and into the general fund? Sorry, I didn't mean to...
How much are we talking? Approximately, how much will it be?
Well, it's not gonna be that much. I had originally hoped for around $15,000. I don't think we're gonna be near that. I think we're gonna be five or six, just depending on the amount. Unfortunately, the industrial ones just don't have the, the cost. My air packs are about $8,000 a piece, new. These are...
Lucky to get one.
Could be.
So it's not enough to mess with?
Yeah, I agree. Sorry.
It was very nice of them to donate, though. Very nice of them. We appreciate that. We appreciate that.
I would be sure they realize we're gonna trade demand or whatever.
They're, they're well aware of that. So, it's, they will.
May I have a motion?
I have a motion this time.
All right, let's go.
It's roll call time. Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Move on second.
Second, second.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Council Bill 4040 is now ordinance 5293. That concludes first and second readings. There being no first readings, we'll move to all business, of which I know of none. Anybody? And we'll move to comments and start with staff. Chief?
I have nothing to say.
Chief?
I have nothing.
Richard? Chris?
Well, I just don't wanna break the trend there. All right, don't. I just wanna make sure that the media hears that, and I think if you get an opportunity to thank staff, that the challenge, October challenge for raising awareness for breast cancer and cancer in general. City employees was able to raise $6,001.15, far exceeding every goal that I had laid out from the get-go. My original was if we could do $1,500, we'd be doing great. And so, I just want, and, and I, and I know I sent out an email, and I also want to say that, you know, if you really look and reflect on the work that we've been able to, have been able to get done in this calendar year at this point, there's been a lot of work